Hey Bill, just letting you know this is Damon and I'm on.
Okay Damon's on, so we're going to uh.
Very distorted Bill.
Can you give me a second?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah it sounds a little better, yep.
Alright, let me uh. Do the minutes first, obviously.
I don't know if you want to try a different mic Bill, but that one's still acting up.
I would need an appointment. And I have a recommendation if she would reach. Yeah, only because of uh some medical issues I may have going on. Um, we'd need someone to fill in. And John may be able to, so we definitely need an alternate. Alright.
Bill, if I need to be there in person, then I need to be able to go.
I will. Obviously, tonight would have been a good night for that. Um, can you hear me any better?
Yes, I can.
Alright, put him on the end. If Jimmy shows up, no one's gonna listen to him anymore. Um, what is that?
Still got, still got problems with that mic Bill. Cutting in and out now.
Hi Bill.
How you doing Jeff?
Hi Jeff. Hi John.
Yes.
How about now? How about now?
Still breaking up, still breaking up.
That's two mics.
Take mine.
No, it's, it's.
It's the system. How about now? Check, one, two, three.
That sounds a lot better right there.
Okay. Alright, I need a motion on the floor to approve them.
Except the minutes for April 26th to 2021. That is written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Damon.
Damon seconds, all those in favor?
Barry, I'd roll by.
Damon, I.
Bill Ambrosino, I. So, dead order of business. Excuse me, I'm working off the wrong uh agenda here. Still breaking up?
Yeah, I, I have something to tell you. This seems to happen intermittently. We'll have to call over the cable eight.
Um, alright, uh, we'll need to pay close attention to the people that are on online. Um, bear with us out there, uh, if at any time you're not hearing, uh, please uh let us know. And uh, we will uh try and make sure we can. If at some point I think it's intolerable, we'll have to continue all the meetings until we find out what's going on. So, alright, so the first order of business is gonna be uh special permit, a home business application for 166 Millville. I'll read the article from uh, it was published in the Millford Daily News. In accordance with Master in Law, Chapter 48, Section 11. Notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held by teleconference or in person on Monday, May 10th at 7:00 PM in the Menon Town Hall to consider a special permit for a dog breeding. Uh, New England Labradoodles, at Route, at uh 116 Millville Street in Men. Published in the Millford.
Can't hear you.
I said it was published in the Millford Daily News on 4/23, was there a second date? It's not in here. Was it?
April 30th.
Oh, and 4/30. Oh yeah, there it is, okay, I'm sorry. Two different uh, and all the paperwork's in order, it appears. Damon's been made, so we're good. Is uh Mrs. Marius with us tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um. I guess my first question would be, uh, how many dogs are you planning on utilizing to, for the breeding? And how, how many will be on premises at one time?
Um, the max would be four. We own a dog who will never. The max is three.
Breaking up now too.
Do you need me to repeat it?
Yes.
Can you say yes?
Yep.
So, the max, we own a dog that. So, he will never be a part of our breeding program. And right now, we have one dog who is planning in the future to be a part of our breeding program, a female. Um, and the, the maximum that would be living with us uh would be four. And they live inside of our home.
They were always contained in the residence?
Yeah, they, yeah, they're inside of our home, fenced yard. Where, um, and, and they're, if they're outside, they're pretty much supervised by us. They're not outdoor dogs, for sure, sure.
Okay. Alright, um, does the board have any questions? I mean, it's permitted, it's, it's permitted, you know, used by special permit. Um, I guess we need to look at uh whether there's consideration for if it goes against the well-being of the community, which I find it hard to believe four dogs contained in the residence would be, but I will uh, I'll take any further input from the board.
I got nothing.
Another one, Damon?
What, Navis?
Um, my only suggestion would be, would be to uh to, you know, speak to the uh animal law control officer and just make sure you're, you're keeping up to uh you know, you're keeping up to what his requirements are as far as housing other uh dogs, but I don't uh, I don't see it as an issue, but I'm gonna open it to uh the floor, uh, I'm gonna open it to the community with any questions. Is there anybody with any questions?
I'd like to know if there are gonna be four adult dogs. Two adults and puppies that they may have, um, will the puppies be outside?
I think it's just breeding. I, I don't believe you're gonna be housing the puppies.
The puppies will be. Regularly sanitized, they'll be born there, live there.
I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat that because uh you're breaking up.
They will be born. And they will. Home for around eight weeks that they're with us until they go to their adoptive forever homes.
And they will be, those will also be inside the residence?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, does that answer your question? Any concerns?
So, you've got somebody that raised their hands here when you're, when you're ready.
I can't hear you. You may have to unmute your mic.
Yeah, you're unmuted, please state your name.
Could you come up and, and approach one of the microphones to speak, please?
The podium has one.
Yeah, there's one up there.
Lucille and John Clinkman. 162 Millville Street.
You wanna let this lady finish?
Uh, please, so we keep it, so, so we keep point of order. The only time I allow people to speak is if I call on you.
Oh, I thought you did, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have, I mean, I live right next door and I just have a concern about how loud the dogs may be, or if they have puppies, how loud, loud the puppies may be. Um, you know, I moved there so that I could have the peace and quiet of a small, small town. And I, and I don't have a problem with dogs, you know, I just don't want there to be so many that I don't want to be having to listen to dogs.
How many, how many usually come in a litter with the Labradoodle?
It varies from one to 12, so you don't, you don't have any way to know. But they will be inside of our home, I mean, you, you won't. There won't be a noise problem um with that, I mean, do you, do you notice noise?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to set a limit to one litter?
What's that?
We're gonna have to set a limit to one litter.
At a time.
And, and four dogs. Are you okay with that?
Well, not, not a, not if there's not a, a actual, if I have two different females that have litters at one time, at the same time, I don't understand how.
That's a question, it, it um. Yeah, if it ends up being 20 dogs and they're all barking at the same time.
They're puppies, they don't really bark.
Okay. Are they gonna be in the basement or something, is that it?
No, I have a room on the main level of my home, that, but my, I, I live in a, a brick home. I mean, there, there's not a, a noise. Um, element to the puppies. They're, they're, you know, up to eight weeks old, there's not a barking. They can't really make a loud noise.
Have you presently had any issues there uh with the dogs that are, exist there currently?
No.
Okay.
I have, and I'm just concerned about that many dogs at once.
What I would suggest, if the board does approve the application, um, in, in the future an issue arises, I mean, we can, we can obviously look at it again.
Okay.
And, and you know, either set conditions or, or figure out another way to handle it, but um you know, I, I'd hate to think we're not gonna allow her to at least attempt it.
Yes.
And um.
I understand that.
But, but at any time you feel that, you know, it isn't working for you, just come back to the board.
Okay.
Get in touch with Gail, come back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We've got the other people.
We got another person there.
Yes.
Pointings.
Clinkman.
What's her name? Go ahead, you can speak now.
162 Millville Street?
Yes.
And where the butters, we received a notification from you.
Yep.
One of our concerns was also um how many uh female dogs would be there? And uh Christie has answered that, but we also were, had a concern that there could be a potential problem with barking. But she has assured us that the puppies don't bark when they're that young. But we also would like the opportunity to be able to come back to the board if there is a barking problem, a noise problem.
Absolutely.
And I can assure you, I don't want to listen to barking either, so it's from, we will not have dogs in our house that are barking incessantly, because I live here, so I promise you that.
So, is the.
But at any point in time you, you feel uncomfortable with what's going on, come back to the board and we'll, we'll take a look at it, you know?
So, is the, are, are we saying that there will be, have you approved that there will be four female dogs? And they can be bred whenever, or, because you had mentioned a one litter restriction a few minutes ago.
Is, is, is it four female dogs or four dogs?
No, well, we, um, currently I own one female dog. Um, there is a, I, I, we would love to add another one in the future, but that's not on the horizon um at any time really soon, but um, no, we will not have more than uh three females, I think it will only be two.
So, three rather than four, you're saying?
No, well, we own a dog who is not a part of our breeding program. He's neutered.
Female?
He's a male, but he's, my point is he won't be um a part of the breeding program.
So, there'll be three females, plus your own dog?
They're, well, they're all our own dogs, they're our family pets, they live in our home. Um, but the, there, there's the theoretic possibility of up to three female breeding dogs, theoretically.
Yeah.
Is there current Lanning issue with uh noise at that residence now? With the dogs that are there?
Do you have any calls? With the noise now?
No, no, we can't uh hear them now, but then we haven't opened our windows for the summer yet. My name's John Clinkman at 162 Millville.
Okay.
John, these are the same dogs that we've had um now for three years, so it won't be any different going forward than it has been.
So, will the, is your yard fenced in for the pups to go out? It's a fenced in area?
We are, yes, well, we have, one side of our house has a yard that's completely fenced, and on the side of the house that I believe is on your side, there's a very small potty area that's fenced. Um, but, but yes, anywhere where the dogs are is fenced.
And that's just for the, uh, four dogs or?
That's for everybody.
Yeah, we don't have four dogs right now, but theoretically in the future.
Two, four dogs.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, uh, John, but again, uh, will there be any kind of a building or other structure built?
For, for the business or for the dogs? No, the dogs will always live in our home and be in our home.
Anybody else?
Any other questions?
Is there a, Chris, Christie, will there be like a dog run or something that they use?
No. No, we have a fenced yard. These are little Labradoodles, they're not, um, they're mini Labradoodles.
Miniature?
Under 30 pounds.
Small ones are the yappes.
They're really not, to be honest, they don't really bark much. They're in the house right now and you can't hear them.
Yeah, Labradoodles are, Labradoodles are pretty quiet as a rule. Um, it's those two hours you're gonna wash out.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion.
What's that Damon?
There's no other questions from the uh audience, I'll make a motion.
We're all set, right?
We have a motion on the floor. What's your motion?
Uh, approve a special permit for a home business application. Breeding, breeding Labradoodles at 166 Millville Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
John?
Aye.
Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Bill Ambrosino, aye. Alright, so that is approved. Uh, like I said, anytime anyone has any issues, they can come back to the board and express their concerns. And we'll see what we can do to resolve them.
Thank you, thank you everybody.
Right.
Alright. Next in order is um the continuation of the uh.
No, it's not.
The opening of the site plan special permit for 35 Cape Road. I will uh give an opportunity to the.
Excuse me Bill, we have to close the public hearing.
Oh, yes.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for 166 Millville Street.
Second.
All those in favor?
John, aye. Barry, aye.
Damon, aye.
Bill, aye. Um, alright, before we move on to the next uh 35 Cape Road, um actually, I gotta read the uh, the hearing, we'll open the, we'll open the hearing first, because uh, and uh, the legal notice in the Millford Daily News. In accordance with MGL, Chapter 48, Section 11. Notice hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, May 10th, 2021 at 7:00 PM by teleconference or in person at the Menon Town Hall to consider a site plan special permit submitted by Brian Nelson of Metro West Engineering. Um, for the, for the commercial building at 35 Cape Road. One of the property is uh Wenger Real T L L C. It was in the Millford Daily News on 4/23 and 4/30. Um. Alright, I will be using uh Robert's rules for this meeting. I don't expect any cross-talk. Anybody has any questions, they had to direct them to me, please. Uh, and I will get you an answer. At this time, I'm going to uh allow the applicants engineer. I'll also uh discuss these, these uh we have counsel here tonight, due to the fact we have received uh notification from both sides uh attorneys on their position statement on this uh on this particular project, so we have counsel here tonight, Cindy Amara. She'll be uh making her recommendations to the board as we go. Um, we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak, but I do not want repetitive questions. If, if I find that questions become repetitive, I will be uh stopping that question in order. Um. So, with that, um. All yours, it's like a new hearing.
Okay. Uh, for the record, my name is Brian Nelson with Metro West Engineering. Um, to my right is one of the applicant's Fran Markhoop. So, Fran can answer questions from uh certainly the applicant's side. Uh, I'm gonna go through basically the existing condition and the proposed conditions. Um, similar to what we had presented uh for the site plan review hearings we did back in March. And give you a little bit of an update as to uh where we've gone and, and certainly uh where we've gotten through up to this point, so if um, everyone's okay, I'll start with the boards up there and I'll take the mic from the podium. Everyone hear me okay?
Can everyone hear him okay?
He's good.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Again, I'd like to um, you know, basically just go through the existing conditions of our site at 35 Cape Road. And just for orientation, we are located on the westerly side of Cape Road. Right at the intersection of Cape Road, which is running from south to north. Right at the intersection of Bates Street, which hits here and runs southwesterly. North is going straight up this page, and our site is located on the westerly side. Extends back about seven or 800 feet back, it's a fairly long rectangular lot. Uh, contains an area of about 182,166 square feet, which is just about 4.2 acres. Um, sites located in the highway business, a 40,000 square foot zone. And we are bounded on the easterly side or across Cape Road, uh, there are a couple residential properties. To the northerly side are the relatively new soccer fields, um, and again, the fields are shown right about here. Uh, we've got the solar farm, which bounds us on the westerly side and kind of extends northerly around the soccer fields. And we've got residential, there's a sliver of property that belongs to the solar farm, and then there are residential properties south of that. Uh, there is an existing house located in pretty close proximity to Cape Road, which is shown right here. A large detached garage slightly to the southwest and a couple other small outbuildings. Everything again is, is located in close proximity to Cape Road. Existing driveway which leads to the garage is shown right here, the existing curb cut off of um Cape Road. There is an existing gravel driveway which starts basically at the northeastern corner of the property and passes through the property in a westerly direction, and that provides access to the solar farm to the west. That is located within an easement that varies in width, um, it's 40 feet wide. About two-thirds past the westerly side of the property, and then it flares out um in that gravel driveway. Heads this way, the easement line is shown in that black dashed line right here. And again, that is owned by the applicant's land, it's basically for the use of the property to the west. Existing topography, relatively flat up in the area of Cape Road, kind of around the existing house. If you get back a couple hundred feet elevation, start to taper with a moderate grade change to about 400 or 450 feet off Cape Road. And then the westerly bit of the lot's got a little bit more severe geographic relief. Um, it's approximately 25 feet of topographic relief from the high point located here to the westerly end of the property. The majority of the property at the present time is, um, it's basically the easterly, say two-thirds, up to about this stone wall. Majority of this area has been cleared, there are some trees along the perimeter. Certainly, the area along the gravel driveway has been cleared. Um, this southwesterly corner is wooded, um, not. This southwesterly corner is wooded, not densely wooded, but it is wooded.
There aren't weapons on the property and
Move right to the-
Okay. Proposed site plan board is at the same scale as the existing. It's oriented the same way, again, north, going straight up the page. Cape Road or Route 140 on the right-hand side, going from south to north. And basically, the proposal entails the removal of the existing structures and construction of a 31,000 square foot, single-story, commercial building located basically in the central portion of the property, but more towards the east, about 90 feet deep and a little over 400 or so feet long. And this is the building shown in brown. We do have an entrance to the site, basically coming in through that existing gravel driveway easement at the northeastern corner of the property. So no changes in curb cuts. And, you know, basically using the same curb entrance off of Cape Road, basically providing access to the site, coming straight along the northerly side of the building or hooking around and, you know, coming into the southerly side. The elevations of the building are basically set that the front of the building will be more the customer slash, you know, more the front entry of all these particular units. And again, what the applicant would like to do is basically divide this building up into kind of on-demand tenant spaces. And we had talked a little bit at previous hearings about having tenants basically very interested in a 10,000 square foot space and a 6,000 square foot space respectively, kind of from east to west. And again, the elevations facing the southerly side or facing the residential properties would be, you know, more customer entrances, certainly less traffic expected to these. We'd have handicap parking and a row of parking along that southerly side. Northerly side would be more, you know, the business access part of it. There would be, you know, shop doors and employee entrances, and that would certainly be along the northerly side. So again, there is some off-street parking located in three banks along the southerly side. We've got four proposed handicap spaces. Some additional parking to the west of the building. So basically what we did is, and we talked about this, I know, at prior hearings, looking at similar business models that the applicants have for properties that they presently own and operate, looking at approximately a maximum of 30 employees for the entire building, basically looking at a requirement of, where is that number? We've got 51 spaces proposed, and the zoning bylaw would require 32. So there is an excess of parking spaces. Certainly, and again, these numbers that we've designed for are basically built on projections that the applicant has used at other sites, primarily in Hope Dale, so not too far away. And there are several enhancements to, you know, improve the site. Basically, the new septic system would be located in the front of the property up near Cape Road. That plan has been submitted to the Board of Health. Again, we've got parking along the southerly side, access through like we've got presently, basically looking to pave the gravel driveway up to a point here. So basically, the existing gravel driveway would become paved, and we'd have pavement around the sides of the building for parking. Some plantings basically located around the building with some street trees, a pretty dense arborvitae hedge along the southerly side to provide buffering from the residential properties. And new domestic water supply well would be located on the property, kind of right up near the northerly property line. And a stormwater management system is proposed. Basically, we do have a fairly significant increase in impervious area. So to mitigate that, we've got a network of drain catch basins and drain lines and manholes, which will route stormwater runoff to a larger sediment for bay and infiltration or detention basin or infiltration basin here. And we've got a smaller system on the northerly side, basically to catch runoff from some of this downward-facing slope and some of the driveway. But the majority of the stormwater runoff will be treated in the for bay and towards in the infiltration basin here. With the stormwater controls in place, smaller storms will runoff from the abutting, or from the site to abutting properties will be significantly reduced. We do have a reduction for all storm events, you know, 2 through 100. And, you know, basically, we have, through the site plan process, which we were involved with previously, we do have head-submitted plans. We had gotten comment review from Graves Engineering. We did submit a revised set of plans, and we had addressed all the comments from the Graves review. And there were some, you know, comments. There were some discussions through the site plan process. Our original plan had two entrances. We had removed that second entrance, basically, you know, at the request of the board and the abutters at the first meeting. So we made some significant changes. Certainly, I think from an engineering perspective, we've, you know, we've addressed the comments. I do have with a rendering of the building. And again, Fran, you can jump in too. You know, you guys have had a little bit more input to the architecture of the building than I have, so I'll let you jump in where where needed. But, you know, basically, looking at a one-story building, you know, approximately 20 feet from first floor up to the to the ridge. It's a relatively flat roof, so not an imposing structure. Looking at different materials, like a brick facade, basically up to the door line and the window line, some kind of metal plating in the upper reaches, and then again, a relatively flat roof. Part of the submittal, we did some set of architectural elevations, and I think floor plans, and then also we had put a photometric plan together. But again, primarily wall pack units located on the exterior faces of the building. I do not believe that we had any pole-mounted lights. So, you know, again, trying to wash the property basically from the building out radially to illuminate the parking areas, but not to have that illumination go onto abutting properties. And that's a very quick pass-through of the proposed. I'm not sure if Fran wants to add anything. I'll let him-
We had the lights checked to make sure that we were following all the light on our property and trying to, you know, mitigate any external light from beyond the surface, beyond the area that we're trying to light in the parking lot. As far as the facade, we've been using brick, red brick. It looks nice. It's easy to maintain and clean-looking. It's a business.
I guess, you know, try and remove the elephant from the room. How far is the setback from the residence and the existing the existing district from residential to highway business? Do we know what those exact numbers are?
Get it to you pretty quickly.
Proposed building is located 59 feet off the southerly boundary line. So that's from the southerly face of the building to, in a southerly direction, we're 59 feet to the lot line. The northerly side, the closest projection, which would be-
The district line or to your lot line?
That's to the lot line. I can scale you a distance to the district line if you like.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll just give you the other dimension, basically from the north-westerly building corner to the lot line on the northerly side or the soccer field side, that would be just under 68 feet.
Okay.
So we do have that easement that's located on the northerly side of the property as well. And again, let me if you guys can bear with me one second, I'll scale that distance to the district line.
Take your time.
Sure.
We looked at positioning the building differently, but economically, it doesn't make that one work. You'd have to there's always the opportunity to convert the building into a different business model, and I don't think that would be, although allowed by your zoning, I don't think it would be in best interest to your abutters.
Well, yeah, I mean-
We have a couple of potential that if we, if it became a crash position, that there's another route to take.
Something my question was, you know, on the authority, 67th district is the boundary. We know that the easement's there. But, you know, the board through site plan has a right to relieve a certain amount of setback from that side. So whether potentially, or whether there's a narrowing of the building that could take place and lengthening, you know.
Taking both.
But I want to see how far we are from the home and the residential district first.
So we're about 109 feet from the, basically, the southerly side of the building to the zone line, which would be the far end of the property that's basically owned by the solar farm.
So, and what about the top? Is that further, or?
We're talking above. This is the distance here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 109 feet.
109 feet. And the 301 calls for 100 feet, right? To the district, I believe. And 200 feet from the closest house. Now, do we have the number to the closest residence?
That's based on the without taking into consideration that this is an abutting property as one, you know, I guess is a-
It's a mean-to-doity within the bylaw.
We're just trying to, I see what you're saying. We're trying to see if we can just eliminate it without having a conflict.
And, you know, we want to make sure, I have some suggestions on possibly additionally to the buffer. If we do move the building, maybe do a raised buffer, like you've been seeing people, they build a berm and put the affidavits on top.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, it quiets the noise, gives a better screening, so there's a possibility maybe of doing that, if we could fit it in.
I mean, what about a fence?
Yeah, I think they'd rather look at natural screening more than a fence, to be honest with you. It was a suggestion.
I've done that before where I did a mix, you know, and that is helpful. Again, trying to mitigate anything that's there, but
And we're trying to be reasonable as a town, but I do have, you know, the community to concern with. And if I can, as a planning director, we obviously we have to meet all needs reasonably, so it's-
But there are other uses that are allowed that aren't as friendly.
Yeah.
It's really that way. You know, we have a fallback plan, but-
Well, yeah, and maybe, maybe, you know, if we continue this, you bring them just a quick sketch of that and and what that's gonna look like.
The fallback plan wouldn't be in best interest of your-
Yeah, well, that's exactly the point. And we've got a lot of-
You know, I got a vested interest, so in my eyes, this would be the, if I was sitting as an abutter knowing what could go there, this would be probably the least, you know, knowing you get mostly storage. The first tenant that we're talking about is very user-friendly.
Yeah.
You know, minimal people, minimal traffic, you know, no big trucks that are coming in and out of us. All the stuff that most abutters would be concerned, or I'd be concerned if I was a abutter.
Yep. And we always know there is the use out there that you wouldn't like next to you.
What was the distance to the residence?
Oh, we have a question from counsel here.
From the southerly side of the building to the nearest residence, I'm going off of GIS information, so it's about 160 feet.
160 feet?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding correctly that the 109, if I wrote it right, is from your building to the
To the zone line?
Zoning district line.
Which is the southerly boundary of our southerly abutting parcel, yes.
I just wanted to make sure that it was that boundary we're talking about. Thanks.
Okay, so we're obviously, you said about 160 feet?
Approximately, yes.
The nearest residence? I mean, ultimately, you know, to meet the zoning bylaw-
That's to his property line, right?
No, that's to the actual, to the residence.
Okay.
Yeah, it's approximately 109 feet.
Okay.
To the property line. Yeah, from the southerly face of the proposed building. Yeah, to the boundary line.
Okay.
Well, working within the scope of the current zoning bylaw, you know, unfortunately, it wasn't written as well as it should be. But that being said, you know, it's approved by the town, and we're looking to make the most reasonable, conscious decision on the best way to handle this. So is there 40 feet in setback or or some other way we could handle this? Narrow the building 10 feet and?
Not make it still economically feasible, because the site work is pretty immense. Not only do we have to demolish it-
I see this parking lot at the end, you know.
You mean here?
Yeah, is that necessary, or could you extend the building and narrow it?
If this is this way, you would put the parking up here without any recommending, or?
Yeah, because if you move the building down, does it relieve more distance from the residence? That's my question. Sorry.
You gotta use the mic if you walk away.
So I think, I think what I'm saying is, yeah, initial residence is up on Bates Street.
That's correct.
That's right here.
No.
It's closer to the intersection. Yeah, it's pretty much where your fingers are.
Yeah.
So if you move the building back, does it alleviate some of the encumbrance on that initial residence?
It depends on what the resident was looking for, because if you're moving it this way, then you've got pavement. I don't know if that-
I'm hoping you're gonna buffer, you know, you're gonna buffer well enough that they won't see pavement. I'm more worried about them seeing the building, I guess, would be my question.
Bill?
Yeah, Damon.
I mean, at this point, it doesn't matter about pavement. It matters about how many feet we are from the house, from the building, so-
Right, correct. I mean, that's what the bylaws give.
What we've gotta try to accomplish is getting, what's it, 200 feet, correct?
I mean, with affidavits and a raised berm, you're not gonna see the parking lot anyways.
From that house.
In the residential area.
I don't know. What do you think, Brian? What do you think?
I think we'd have to look at it, to be honest with you. I think there's some latitude to move the building north and still respect the easement. I think to move it basically due west, I think we'd have to slide it quite a bit. And I think at that point-
Well, I just want to know whether it gains you any ability to to fit the building within the constraints of the bylaw. I mean, that's, we're trying to be reasonable here. We're trying to work with you guys. But I do have, you know, community people that I have to concern myself with representing them also. On whether-
We also understood the buffer to be, as it's read, you know, as we had our, actually, this attorney here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think there's been answers from-
That way, she was leaning that way, that-
Yeah, but there was a good argument made by, and not saying it's right or not, I mean, I've been looking online to find, there's very few-
I read the letter.
There's very few cases like this out there to refer to. That's the problem.
I reached back out to our attorney firm and asked him the same thing, and
Yeah, the bottom-
His answer by his original thing, he says, you know, that's the way it's-
Bottom line is, I'm representative town of Mendon. I have two sides that are willing to litigate this.
Yeah.
Okay, my job is to keep Mendon out of that. Now, if we can be reasonable, represent the people, as the bylaw stipulates, and I can also represent you as, I mean, to be honest with you, I look at as an applicant as a, as a Mendon resident too. You guys have rights too. So if we can represent all parties, that's the job of this board, and we just have to work to get to that.
I don't know how much give and take. I don't think we could move, I, this is just my opinion, I don't think we could move the building enough to give you exactly what you need to meet-
Well, I mean, I'm not worried about if it's five feet short. I mean, that's just, that'd be unreasonable for the town to take that position.
We're five feet short now.
But if we're 40 feet short now-
We're gonna end up with a fight anyway, you know, because then it's technically, if we're gonna end up with a fight anyway.
No, that's, but the town's in a better position either way, whether it's you or whether it's them. We've made-
Conscious effort to- Conscious effort to...
Conscious effort to be reasonable. And that's what the board asked...
Trying to gain out of it.
Well, again, I think we could, we can certainly move the building north 20, 25 feet, so that gets you from 160 to 180. I'd honestly, before I commit one way or the other, I would just like to have a few hours to look at, can we slide it west and accomplish that?
That's what I'm asking. If you can slide it down this way, move your retention more towards the front, how far, how far can you get?
Maybe tilt the building a little bit, or...
Gravity working against us, everything wants to flow west because it's going downhill that way, so, but I think, you know, it's something worth looking at, we could take those building blocks and see if we can slide everything west.
Do you have any feeling on this, or?
Yeah. I mean, the most, the most you can get out of it is the most you can get out of it.
Any feeling on whether that's...
You know, and it works for everybody, that's the way to go.
Mm-hmm.
There was too many conversations going on, sorry.
You have any feeling or input on what's being proposed, or?
No, I'm listening, and what I heard, Mr. Nelson said that he'd like a little bit of time to look at it because he feels they can move the building north. In my opinion, that's the most direct benefit to increasing from 160 feet to some number greater than 160 foot, the setback. The east and west, I've got a good understanding of where the nearest residence is, but I don't know offhand, so I am, I speak to the east and west, and I do understand the topography going, going west is problematic.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I don't think there's, you'll gain much by going east and west, really. You're not going to gain much.
Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Well, no, I just, I have all these clarifying questions, because north, south, east and west, and I'm looking at a map, I just want to make sure I'm going the right way, and if, that I understand the board's position.
South is this way, south is this way.
Okay. I, I believe the board's position, and tell me if I am understanding this correctly, is any direction you go, I don't think they really care what direction you go, that gets you more than 160 feet from that line, so you have less than the 40 feet that you're short now?
Yeah.
I think is what the board is looking to see, can you do? Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. And if I could clarify one thing, I think they're looking not more than 160 feet, but to maximize the separation.
Well, as much as we can, I mean, like I said...
Or strive to reach, strive to reach the requirement, I think is, is the terminology I'm thinking of.
Right, well, the board will always look to be reasonable in its final assessment, but we would like to be, obviously, as close to that number as possible.
But what happens if, as we slide it back, does it hurt the other abutters?
Well, there's just the soccer fields in the solar, I don't think the solar...
You're sliding the building back, you still have other abutters on this side, are we gaining anything to give yourself that?
Best you have to look at.
Yeah, so I don't think it's...
I don't know where those other houses are positioned.
So if you're trying to hear, you help this abutter, but you hurt that abutter.
Like I said, I, without them on the drawing there, I can't tell you where those other houses are.
There's one house down and, you know, in here, there is another one over here, but I believe this one's further away than the residence right at the intersection, so I think this would be the constraint, and again, I think we can look at that. What I need to do is just study in a little bit more detail how far we can go from east to west without compromising, you know, drainage and other utilities, so I think that's...
East to west and north to south.
Yeah, well, the north to south, I think, is fairly easy.
Yeah.
It's the east to west, I think, might be a little more problematic.
And north to south is weird.
Yeah.
Okay.
We lose, we lose the ability for the businesses to operate out of the back.
Yeah.
And then you...
You've got to leave enough room.
You've got to, right.
You almost have to flip the building over and then you create, what you're trying to...
Well, we don't want to do that, I don't want to bring the truck, truck traffic to the residence.
You know what I mean, that's why we put, we put...
And that, that might be a decision we need to make.
Right.
And through the special permit process, that might be a decision we need to make going forward, is...
I'm not sure I understood.
Well, you could achieve it if you put the truck traffic on that side. Well, the board may decide that's not, that's not in the best interest of the community, so we may ask you, we may relieve some of that and, and, you know, figure out how we can best get this to work so everybody's happy.
Yeah, because we already looked at...
It's kind of my point at the beginning, when I, when I had hoped that everybody would get together, including the community and you guys, so we could work it out. I think we could have achieved that if we had done this earlier. Now we just have to see what we can do and, and go from there. At this point, I'm going to let some of the members of the community speak while I have town council here. This gentleman out here, say your name and your address, please.
Skip Wiganowski, 7 Edward Road.
Okay.
Just go on the news and while this mic's online.
He's got it right here.
Thank you. Skip Wiganowski, 7 Edward Road. I'm the likely abutter.
Yep.
And as it stands now, pushing that westward, there's a drainage basin at the, at the base of that westward movement. If you push it any farther down, you're going to be pushing that very close to the entrance of the solar panels, dry.
Well, that's why he's got to do his configuration, and then I, our engineer will take a look at it and see if it's doable.
All right. I, I had some, some concerns a little bit, I just...
Sure.
Um, myself, I feel that the footprint is too large for the site, it's better suited for an industrial park. I understand that the special permit is going to bypass the bylaws, and I was wondering what the impacts and issues are of that.
Well, the, the special permit isn't going to bypass the bylaw. The special permission provides protection to the bylaw, but the town still needs to maintain, you know, it needs to be reasonable in its request. Anybody can litigate, and as we found out in this town, I, I've, I've had to rewrite three bylaws in this town due to litigation. So the town has to be reasonable in all its requests. Now, the special permit process asks the board to make the most reasonable decision to protect the abutters, to protect the community, and preserve our bylaw. And that's what we intend to do, but if, if, he certainly, as the applicant, also has rights too, and if he can make it work within the confines of the bylaw, then the town has no alternative.
Understood, understood. Um, I'm a little dismayed because I saw advertisements for the property back in February as the construction was already done. It's a construction building site available before the planning process even started.
Well, they have, they have to do testing and stuff there, I'm...
But it was marketed as, as the building was in place, it said it is.
Well, obviously, we know that not to be true.
Um, my other question is, the drainage area, how much of a setback is there from the drainage area, and is it still water going to be in there as far as mosquitoes and vegetation and things like that, or is it going to be drained through like a rip rap or something?
Jeff, would you like to answer that, or?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Jeff Walsh, I'm with Graves Engineering, peer review consultant for the planning board. The two stormwater basins on the west side of the site, requirement for those criteria and their design, that they would drain dry within 72 hours or less. So there would, there would not be prolonged standing water in them.
There would be no standing water?
No prolonged, I mean, initial, you know, initial rainfall, but no standing water.
Understood, understood. And the only other question is, could that drainage area also be buffereded with plantings and whatnot?
If you, you're welcome to, yeah, I know you live right here, you're welcome to come down to the property, I have two of them, and they're significantly larger than that, and they've been there 20 years, you're welcome to take a look at them at any time, right after rain, they, they work pretty well.
No, he's asking if there was a, be able to put a screening around it like affidies and something.
I mean, sure, I mean, it's, it's, it's not unforeseeable as far as doing that, it's not a big deal.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, that's good, that actually sucks some of the water up anyway.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, because, I mean, you're, you're, you're right down to, you're, you're awful close, I mean, if the drainage doesn't run right, you're flung right into that solar park. And they already put a berm up from the soccer field, because the soccer field disposes all their snow into that corner, and when it melts, it all, it all drains down that way.
But they have no drainage right now, there's no design system, no nothing.
Well, they have, they have a big drain at the back of that soccer field.
Yeah, but nothing from the, the soccer field has a drain, but it doesn't...
Right, right.
Yeah, I know, then...
And then it was requested, and they did, they put the plantings in and they put the berm in to adjudicate the, the water runoff.
Running off.
Yes.
I think you'll find that, if anything, this system that we have will take, it'll buffer a lot of that anyway. You know, we, we have plans for where the snow goes and all of that stuff, because it's part of good planning, because we don't want water on our property either, you know, it doesn't make any sense to have floods and stuff, your customers aren't going to want icy roads and all the things that come from water and drainage and things like that.
Well, the only, the only reason I was concerned, because the property next door, that big field next to Mr. Hodge's property, or close to a proximity to it, doesn't perk real well.
Well, I think that, I think that is an issue more of the town, there's a, Menden's got a bedrock under it, I own a piece of property up here at the corner of Washington Street, I dig a foot, we hit water. So that's a consistency across the community in Menden.
Thank you.
You got Mr. Hodge?
Yeah, I was just waiting for him to return the mic. Mr. Hodge, if you'd like to speak, please announce your name and address.
Sure. Bill, if it's okay with you, as I've mentioned a couple times now, I've, I have a presentation that I wanted to make for the board.
Sure.
Go ahead and share that now. Okay, great, thank you. So, good evening, everyone, I'm Eric Hodge, I'm the homeowner at 3 Bates Street, just wanted to say a quick thank you for another opportunity to speak about this project. I do have another presentation tonight, it's 11 slides, and I will try and keep this as brief as possible. One of my aims with this presentation was to address some of the concerns that had been raised at public prior, prior public hearings. Formerly, there'd been some question as to the history of the existing highway business district bylaws, as well as whether those had ever been reviewed by the Attorney General's Office. In terms of a brief history, as of March 2013, special town meeting, Article 16 replaced Section 103 introducing the highway business district. In May of the same year, the Attorney General, you know, approved Article 16, providing no notes concerning Article 16. February of 2014 was special town meeting, where Article 18 replaces Section 301 by unanimous voice vote after amendment, and that article introduced the highway business rural residential buffer of 100 feet and 200 feet. And again, in May 2014, the Attorney General reviewed Article 18, providing comments, but none of those comments concerned Article 3, Section 301(c)(15). Why is this important? As I'm sure the board is aware, but for the public in general, when the town adopts or amends its zoning bylaws, the town submits them to the Attorney General's Office for review and approval. The Attorney General then approves the bylaws if they are consistent with the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Mass. This review and approval process demonstrates the validity of the bylaws discussed here tonight. I'm going to take a quick, closer look at that Article 18 I just mentioned a moment ago. So again, that was a replacement of the existing Section 301. I feel it's important to call out the community engagement in crafting that bylaw. So Article 18 was amended 21 times during that special town meeting, either by unanimous or majority votes. So I want to illustrate for the board and the community that this wasn't a bylaw that was passed by mistake. Town residents voiced their will and, more importantly, expressed their intent through that amendment that was ultimately reflected in the final version of Section 301, which I've put up in the past. Again, you know, the, the, this particular bylaw was reviewed by the Attorney General, and while there were comments on Section 301, there were none that were relevant to the 100-foot, 200-foot buffer that we've talked about. So this is the, the bylaw in particular that I've, I've called the board's attention to and that the community's attention to. I realize I put this bylaw up a few times at this point, but there's a couple new things that I really wanted to highlight. Item 15 of, of that bylaw makes clear that the following buffer and screening requirements shall apply in the highway business district, meaning the totality of the district, not just the first lot in the district. Sub item 1 clearly states wherever a non-residential district abuts a residential district, again, it does not mention lots for the abuttal. So that we're clear, districts themselves are defined in Article 1, Section 103a, the delineation of districts. The highway business district is defined in item 4, which is, which also does not mention any individual lots. This item reads highway business district. The purpose of the highway business district is to provide for uses of it, business nature, which require adequate highway exposure and access. It later goes on to say, "A further objective is to provide adequate and appropriate separation and/or buffering of business use in residential areas." In short, my argument on this bylaw is that there can be no mistake, the 100-foot, 200-foot buffer that we've discussed here applies to the totality of the highway business district, not just the first lot in the district. This is slide 5 here, and it actually directly addresses some of the questions that were raised earlier tonight. I put this up before, but this is actually an updated drawing of, of the 100-foot and 200-foot buffers. I was able to, to update this drawing based on the applicant's locust plan as well as their, their site plan, and that is drawn to scale, and the 200-foot buffer is inclusive of that entire red circle there, I realize those lines are a bit bold. Let's see. The one thing that I wanted to really kind of call out with this, this buffer now exposed, we were just talking about it a moment ago, yes, the, the, the proposed building infringes on both the 100-foot and 200-foot buffers, but it's important to note that the bylaw reads that that buffer is to be used for no other purpose. It doesn't read for, you know, parking lots or anything else, it's for no other purpose other than natural vegetation and screening. So when we're talking about potentially moving this building, you know, we need to be considering the fact that those buffers are, are to be used for no other purpose. So in order to, to conform to the bylaws, the totality of the building and the parking lot would need to be outside of those buffer zones. I'm going to switch gears for a moment, now that I've, I've talked about the buffer zones. I want to highlight as well that under Article 4, Section 402, which is site plan review, item H7, the planning board can also request traffic, environmental, fiscal, and community impact assessments. So, in terms of a traffic assessment, the applicant has requested a waiver of the traffic impact assessment. Given the dangerous history of Cape Road and Bates Street intersection, I'd submit that this is the very situation where such an impact statement should be required by the board. The minor modifications made to the intersection as a result of the last fatal accident were based upon the traffic patterns at the time, and did not consider the addition of a large development within 1,000 feet of that intersection, nor can it consider the compounding impact of the soccer fields as well as the proposed building at 35 Cape Road. The applicant has asserted that the project is estimated to have a maximum of 30 employees and a relatively small number of customers, clients, visiting the building during the day. I'm curious to see how that might be enforced and what happens if the applicant's business model changes down the road. Finally, with respect to traffic, I have concerns about the parking and traffic at the 35 Cape access road due to the soccer fields. So I've taken a couple pictures over there, just to, to illustrate the problem. These were taken on a Saturday, probably a month ago, I was preparing for a prior public hearing and didn't get a chance to present this, but the fact remains that the situation has been the same every weekend since. But you can see the number of parent cars that are lined up along the, the proposed access road. When you consider the number of parents... When you consider the number of parents exiting from the primary soccer field exits as well as potentially from the 35 Cape Road, Access Road onto Busy 140, we just have the, you know, potential for accidents waiting to happen. I'd also highlight that the lower picture set, uh, inset into the second one, um, kind of shows the width of that road when parents are parked there. I have concerns that even, you know, we could potentially get a fire truck through, um, in order to, you know, service the site if need be. In terms of an environmental impact assessment, I realize the applicant did submit a paragraph on that, um, but given the nature of its intended use, I would submit that the board should require a more detailed environmental impact assessment as well. Uh, the community has raised environmental concerns due to intended use of light manufacturing. Things such as, you know, what sorts of chemicals or hazardous materials are likely to be stored on-site? What's the, the hazardous material spill mitigation plan? We should certainly get answers to these questions and include mitigations in the site plan, um, which we've discussed for, for other sites as well. Moving on to a, uh, community impact assessment, um, the applicant has provided a cursory community impact assessment, so I'd like to call out some facts about the proposed project. This building would become the fourth largest commercial or industrial bill, industrial building in Mendon. Of its comparable peers, it would have the smallest distance to the nearest residence, uh, my home, at 160 feet. It would be much larger structure than, uh, all other Cape Road businesses by at least 36%, and that's 11,280 square feet. Continuing on with the community impact assessment, um, I realize that this picture is a little out of date. Now, the applicant actually showed us a nicer picture earlier, um, during their presentation. Uh, but per the bylaw, the proposed, uh, project's consistency and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood should be considered. Given that the proposed site is in close proximity to both highway business and rural residential, it should seek consistency and compatibility with both zones. I would submit that given that the size of the building and proximity to the residences, as noted in my last slide, uh, they meet neither the consistency nor the compatibility with either zone. The fact that we're even talking about, you know, oh, if we shift the building a little bit this way, a little bit that way, uh, really tends to indicate that the building just doesn't fit at the site. Make, the character of the building as shown may fit more of a highway business zone, but I would argue that it does not fit a rural residential zone. So appreciate everybody listening to me, um, but, you know, in summary, I've demonstrated the site plan before us is not conformed to multiple areas of the bylaws, most notably Section 301, the well-defined buffer. And again, I will remind everyone that those buffers are to be used for no other purpose other than vegetation and screening. Uh, the project should be required to provide a well-considered traffic, environmental, and community, community impact assessments. The project does not fit the surrounding community by square footage, character, or proximity to residences. Uh, and as such, I would ask the Planning Board to render its disapproval of the special permit and site plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, could we, uh, does Dan have a copy of that?
Uh, no, he doesn't, but I'd be happy to provide one and I have, um, high-resolution scans of this slide, uh, that you can see, uh, the markings for the 100-foot buffer and 200-foot buffer. It doesn't show up particularly well on the presentation, but I, I have plotted my, uh, dwelling's, uh, foundation on here as well with a blue line. It's actually in that lower block of text there.
Okay. If you, uh, yeah, if you could, uh, send that to the, to Gail.
I absolutely will do that, yes. Certainly.
We can put it, we can put it in the record?
Absolutely, and I will, uh, did I stop sharing or is this still sharing for you guys?
It's still sharing.
There's my stop presenting button. There we are. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the community?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Sander McSwinney. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm at, um, I have two, I have my business at 37 Cape Road and my residence is at 6 Bates Street. And I too am very concerned about some of the issues that Eric raised and one, one of my main concerns is about the traffic in that area. It is a very dangerous intersection and I don't feel that a business of that size with trucks coming in and out, plus the soccer field, that it would be appropriate. And I also feel that the project sh- shouldn't meet all the requirements of the zoning, uh, laws. And my other concern is, I believe it was a couple of months ago that the applicant, um, suggested or mentioned that a sheet metal plant was going in. And I had concerns at that time, and I still do, about the, um, uh, water, toxic water, uh, drainage in that, from such a building. I know the town of Hudson has had problems because of, um, sheet metal building and also a fire, um, facilities for, like, you know, uh, putting out fires. But I do have some current concerns about the water pollution and the traffic and, um, I think to sum it up, I, I believe that the, the applicant should have to be required to meet all the requirements of the zoning laws. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I, I will venture to say that, you know, some of the items you talked about, certainly fire conditions and the, any type of hazardous material and spill, um, uh, capturing spills, those are more governed by the, our fire department and he has to also meet their requirements also. So, uh, that isn't something the board, uh, would generally, uh, be responsible to handle. But you know what? I'll get input from the fire chief, uh, prior to, uh, resolving this matter.
I can, I can address what we have already. What we have for tendencies right now is, is, uh, he's a small, he's a machine shop that does small component for medical industry, uh, parts fan manufacturer. He does all his treating, any treating that does is off-site. Doesn't do anything as far as any laws, as far as environmental or anything like that. He follows them all. There's no wastewater baths or anything like that where there's chemicals discharged into the water system. That's existing right now. He's been there 20 years. As far as the other units that we're talking, most of them are looking at storage right now. That's where, mostly everybody wants warehousing, so that seems to be the market that we've been going towards. I don't know what to say, you know?
All right, do we have any other questions?
Yes, I have Doug Hartman at 7 Bates Street.
Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I just had a question, um, the south parking lot, what's the distance from the southern edge of that south parking lot to the southern, um, lot line?
I think that's approximately 15.
Are you talking about from here to, to here?
Talking from the, now you're talking.
Sorry, I can't see you, I'm zooming in now.
They're following through with the screening. They're looking for the screening level. So in other words, the edge of the parking lot to, is there potential to cut that back some or, I don't know, whichever alignment for, uh?
We've got approximately 11 feet from the parking edge to the lot line. And again, if the building.
And then how big is the other slice land?
50 feet, approximately 50.
So we're at 61 feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that all need to be taped?
Well, it, it's certainly designed with a, an 18-foot deep parking space and a 24-foot drive-off.
That's kind of what I was referring to, yeah. Okay, I get that.
I'd like to speak a little bit to the traffic assessment as well. I did hear talk about certainly.
Actually, I'd like this gentleman to finish if he has any further questions.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that, uh, nobody has, uh, mentioned anything about any noise issues that might, uh, come out of this building. My understanding from an earlier meeting was that, uh, first, third, or 10,000 feet of the building would be, um, HVAC'd and insulated, but the rest of it wouldn't. You know, early on, there was some talk about another light manufacturing going on in some of the uninsulated portion, second portion of the building. And third, I'd just like to point out to the board that we're, we're not talking about a, um, site that's in the middle of the highway district here. We're talking about a site that's right on the side of the, right in the edge of the si- uh, highway district, right next to residential. And we're sort of talking about it like it's in the middle of the highway district with this large building. Um, I think the, you know, concerns raised in the buffer zone, the concerns dealt with by the buffer zones in Section 3.01 should be taken into serious account here, given the closeness to the residential, um, districts. So, thank you very much and I would request that the board, um, either deny this or get a modification so that it falls within all the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? I want to make sure the community's the opportunity to speak. Anybody, Dan?
I don't see anybody else.
All right, what I would suggest is, uh, if you guys would be willing, that we continue this further along and you can look at.
I want to speak to the parking.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about the traffic.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
And we had stated, I think through a couple of the hearings, I know this came up at our last hearing for site plan review, when the possibility of a traffic assessment is, you know, pursuant to a special permit, um, basically with 30 employees and, you know, a maximum of 30 employees, we, we don't see this site as a big traffic generator. I do see that this facility will be probably a Monday through Friday, you know, an 8 to 5 business, whereas the soccer fields would probably be used.
On the weekends, yeah.
On the weekends and after work.
And to be honest with you.
I don't see that competition of interest there. I think there's, there's, um, there's an offset there, so I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Kind of make the record, be aware of that.
Yeah, to be honest with you, you're probably gonna have to look at the street parking, uh, from the soccer fields anyways, cause as by state regulation, it's illegal.
A typical, our industrial park is vacant on weekends. Go there any weekend, it's vacant. There's nobody there Saturdays and Sundays. This is the way.
I'm, I'm aware of your other park and, um, it's, uh, you know.
So 30 employees is for the total building or is that just for the 10,000 square feet?
No, that's for the.
Talking about warehousing for the rest of it.
Yeah, that, they're, they're usually three to five employees for.
I think it's a maximum of 30, yeah.
The ones that we're negotiating with now that are looking at spaces, it's all warehouse. We've got a big demand for warehousing and that seems to be the way.
So warehousing would generate a different traffic, people coming in and out with, with materials?
Yes and, no, it's usually day, it's not nighttime, it's daytime and it's general, it's generally, um, you know, it's, a truck comes in and drops its stuff and, and picks up and, right back out. Some of these people are, one of the warehousing things, it's a drop-off in long-term storage. So that's one of the ones that we're dealing with. As far as moving, you know, moving the building, I, I think from Eric's demonstration, it's, it is, it shows that you're not moving, moving to right, left, up, down, isn't gonna help. So it's either, it's gonna come down to a, either one side, you, you agree with the abutting lot line as being the rule or you agree with the other side. It's, I think it's gonna come down to that.
Yeah, well, and I, and I can appreciate that. I'm given the opportunity for all sides to take a look at this and, you know, I mean, a board can never look at it dead to the foot.
We appreciate that, uh, I don't think.
All parties have to be reasonable, including the town. And as we've said, whether they're, you know, before, you know, um, bylaws are as good as they'll stand up in court, but also, and that goes in both directions, for the voters, for you. So the board's gonna have to at some point make a decision, what the best decision for the community is. And that is representing the town as far as, you know, potential litigation. I'll be totally honest with you. Sitting here as a Chair, Planning Board Chair, that is a direct, um, concern. I, I, we have to weigh that.
We appreciate that, uh, again, we're, we came in looking at trying to produce a, a product that, that fits into the zoning as we read it, um, our attorneys read it, uh, we designed a plan that we thought would be amicable to the community based on the way we laid it out. I mean, there's other ways to lay out the building. Uh, we, we downs, we actually downsized the building initially. We had 36,000, we went down to 32. Uh, we quickly eliminated the driveway to, addressed the highway traffic situation that we thought, you know, it was a concern right away. We just took it away because we could still make the turning radius work for our project.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that you guys have been.
You know, and being proactive, put the vegetation there that doesn't exist right now. I mean, that's, that's a bit, if you look in that area, uh, by Mr. Hodge's.
Yeah, I mean.
We didn't do that, it just was there.
And that's the thing the board also has to weigh, something's gonna end up there, whether it's a 31,000 square foot or 10 use in, 10-unit, um, residential, um, you know, unit, cause we know the state's working towards, uh, multi-unit housing as of right. So it, uh, whether it ends up being this or something else, more than likely, something's gonna end up on that property. So it's, you know, it's what the least impact is for the, for the surrounding neighborhood. You know, does, you know, 10 to 15 dwelling, uh, dwi- uh, single dwelling unit, um, make more sense with a bunch of people running around? I don't know. It all depends upon who lives next door, I guess. This gentleman had one more question.
Uh, just a point of clarification and information, that soccer field was almost all year round up until nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, it's usually on the weekends. Oh, they do have some night.
They've been practicing right through this pandemic and they practice right through the winter. I mean, they, they go all year round.
Right.
And, and, and the lights.
But most likely when they, to be truthfully honest, it's a state road. It's heavy, it's not heavily traveled to what normal state road would be. And we've had, uh, um, traffic assessments done up there. It's not near what capacity would be for that road. But, you know, I mean, if a true traffic assessments that important, we'll take a look at it. But, you know, the, what goes, what's going on right now with street parking and stuff like that, that's not the, this applicant's fault. I can't hold them responsible for that, that's something we'd have to deal with.
No, but as Mr. Hodge pointed out lately, they've been parking all the way down that east. Yes, and I mean, they, they come almost down to the, the gate of the soccer field, parking, they sit on top of their cars blocking the gate.
Yeah, well, in the easement, they have their right, as long as they don't block it. You know what I mean? I mean, that's what an easement's for generally, but if, as long as they don't block it, then, you know, there's gotta be permissible pass on an easement.
But I mean, that, that, that goes all year round, I just, it's not just.
Yeah, I'm well aware. I'm, I'm well aware, um, you know, and, yeah, Dan.
Just one more person online.
Okay. Are you all set? All right?
I think it's Kathy and then also Eric, it looks like.
Eric, you have another question?
I do, but Kathy's been waiting.
Hi, Kathy, 135 Blackstone Street. I just wanted to, I've been watching this process unfold since the beginning and I think what concerns me is that, um, we had asked or they'd have been requested that, um, or suggested that these particular builders would be, you know, working with the community, trying to make some resolves, amendments in order to be a good neighbor. And that, that came up several times. So what I've seen tonight in the presentation is exactly what we saw at the beginning. So I, I think I am missing where that good neighbor, you know, we want to be here, let's see if we can work something out, is coming from. And I, I would ask that the Planning Board maybe look that there, and see that there might be a different future for this property with a different type of business, um, that is more suitable and where it gives the community an opportunity to work together.
Well, unfortunately, you know, it, Kathy, it, the board doesn't get to dictate what goes on that property. The next one might be like. The next one might be less advantageous than this one, but might meet the zoning bylaw. And I've used this several times as an analogy. You could land a cell tower on there. You could land a multi-unit housing development. And we do know that 48, chapter 48 in Massachusetts is changing. A lot of towns are going to be forced as a right to allow housing units. And I'll tell you, when the state puts something out, it's gonna be hard for us to hold our zoning bylaw in there and tell them that they can't do it. Because that's, you know, so, well, that may be the case. There may be something better that comes down the pike. We still have to deal with this applicant. He has rights. So, and so until we exhaust those and the board makes a decision, we have to listen to all parties.
Thanks, Bill. I just, I did want to ask the applicants that, you know, based on, you know, the statements that they made about being a good neighbor, why are we back at the beginning? Why is the proposal, it hasn't changed?
Well, number one, because we requested they file a special permit. They didn't on the original, filed site plan review. We require a special permit, so instead of running site plan reviews separate from the special permit process, we asked them to refile. And that's why we're at the beginning. Because I have to make sure the board members that were attending then, attending now.
Got it. All right, thanks, Bill.
You're welcome. All right. Anyone else? Eric?
I did just have one closing comment here. I didn't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, one of my biggest concerns is simply just the size of this building. You know, if, you know, I mentioned in an earlier, you know, public hearing that if we were looking at something that fully conformed to section 301, we'd be having a much different discussion here. You know, the fact that we're trying to look at, you know, adjusting it left, right, up, down in order to, you know, potentially kind of sort of maybe fit it, you know, really should be a good indicator to the board that this, this building does not fit the site. You know, I tried to illustrate that by way of the statistics with respect to the other large buildings in Mendon. And you'll note that, you know, again, the, this building is substantially larger than any other building on Cape Road. And to that point, I would argue it does not fit the surrounding community. You know, if we were looking at a reduced-size building that fit within those buffer zones, you wouldn't be hearing this argument from me. We'd be having a much different conversation.
And I understand that, Eric. All I can say to that is we gotta deal with each applicant the same reasonable. They put in a request that it's community. I will venture to say there are, there are more impactful businesses that are a lot smaller on 140, body shops, auto repair facilities. You know, those obviously are a much larger impact to the people around them. So the board has to weigh all that. I mean, it's not an easy decision, so, but we have to be reasonable. We have to give the applicant opportunity to allow it to meet our zoning bylaws.
I think that's the key there, Bill, is meeting the zoning bylaws.
Yep. With regard to the zoning bylaws, and even though the attorney general approved them, we do know that they're only as good as they stand up in court, once again. I mean, I don't want to give anyone-
Sorry, Bill, you just cut out.
Just because we put something in writing on paper, it guarantees what could happen in litigation on either side, you know, both directions. So that's what the board needs to weigh.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I would also point out that it does guarantee until such a time as it is litigated.
Right, correct. Correct. All right, Tom?
One more question. Can I ask this of Mr. Hodge? Is that possible?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Hodge, Framarku. I don't know if it's possible, but is there some vegetation or additional vegetation that would make this more palatable to you and your neighbors?
I'm not prepared to speak at that at this time. I need to consult my neighbors, the surrounding community, my council as well on that matter.
Okay, because we're, you know, our take on it, we're reading it two different ways. He's reading it from one side and we're reading it-
Right. And that's, and the board's right in the middle, so we have to do-
You know, we would like to, if it becomes an opportunity, we'd like to talk to you about it, but again, if it's not, it's not.
Yes, Barry?
I've read their attorney's interpretation of the abutting property. I've read their attorney's interpretation of abutting property. Where does our attorney stand on it? And I hate to put you on the spot, but you'd know where the counts.
I think the bylaw as written is unclear.
Okay.
I think my understanding is it was designed to impact a-
Excuse me, town council cutting in and out. Do we have that repeated?
Yeah, you might need to get close to that.
My understanding, I believe the bylaw is a little vague and a little unclear. At the time, my understanding is this property abutted the residential zone, and the bylaw was designed to deal with properties in different districts where they abut, which is not uncommon in zoning in lots of different places. I think you can make arguments at this point. I think there's also the ability to, you know, condition permits, to waive strict compliance, to seek waivers, to decide to grant them or not, based on whatever information the board has or feels is appropriate. I think this is a preliminary conversation to get a sense of if we had to take a view one way or the other, how far from either view are we, and how close to a meeting ground can we get? So that's a long way of saying, I can't tell you in black and white from what I've seen so far. And I'm not sure where the board is going to end up, or where either the applicant is going to end up with waivers, or how close to compliance with the strict language he believes he is, or how the abutters are going to say, okay, if this, that, or the other concession is made, then to me, we're working together and it's a good solution and I can live with it. I just, I don't, I could see all sorts of options happening here. I do think you have to look at what has been proposed and what amendments get made to it or not. You have to look at strict compliance waivers. It's not uncommon to waive specific zoning requirements to some degree in any zoning situation, depending on what the deviation is and why, and what else could or couldn't be done there. You know, I can't sit here and say the building is the right size for the site, and I can't sit here and tell you it's not the right size for the site. And that's a fact question that the board gets to make when it looks at what the bylaw is trying to do and what it says. The way I've heard things tonight, it seems to me that the 100-foot buffer, at least from what I've seen presented, has been strictly complied to, from what I saw presented. The 300 one is much more of a variable one. And I think, you know, I think you really need to get the information you need to feel comfortable with whether you think one interpretation is strong enough to carry the day, or whether there's a reasonable middle ground that meets the intent of the bylaw and meets the language and can be waived or not, depending on where you are. But I think the important thing is that the board get a sense of all its questions and what it thinks about the use of the site answered.
The thing I'm having a problem with is whether they're considered a direct abutter or not because of that sliver of land.
I don't think they are a direct abutter.
So if they're not a direct abutter, then 100-foot line and 200-foot-
Well, it, the-
That is an interpretation that could logically be made.
That's a-
And that's a consistent zoning table.
That's the ambiguity of the bylaw. When it was originally written, and some of this ambiguity has been built because when the bylaw was originally written, and I've got to take responsibility for that because I actually wrote the bylaw. The ambiguity was created because that was one parcel. Taking 200 feet buffer from the house on a parcel that was, I think it was 20-something acres at the time, never really thinking that that parcel is going to be-
Subdivided.
Subdivided, put us in this position today. So the ambiguity of the bylaw became because we didn't think ahead. And in regards to what the attorney general says, a journey, the attorney general looks for compliance to state and regulatory guidelines. They don't know if that's one piece, two piece, three piece, and so she's never going to weigh in on that. I mean, that's, that's, that's for, was for us to handle, and we did a poor job of it at the time. That being said, we still have this bylaw that breaks up two districts, and we just need to figure out what the best resolve for that is.
The only other thing I would add is, I think, I think in part because of exactly what Bill has said, from a logical point of view, and sitting here, and I don't know, you know, from either side, the enforceability, you know, you've got this strip of land that they can't do anything about. You know, they can't even, even if it made sense to put a buffer on this strip of land to best protect the other property, they can't do anything about it. And the town can't require them to because it's not theirs.
Right.
So there, it's, it's a bylaw that doesn't fit the facts of the land at the moment exactly as narrowly construed. That being said, there is room to make arguments on both sides. You know, I mean-
That's the problem.
And that's, that's why we get these wonderful chairs, Barry. It's coming down to us.
Normally, when you have a large parcel property-
This is, I'm 12 years of sitting on the board.
Normally, when you have a large parcel property and the owner subdivides it, and he's selling off pieces, he's responsible.
Yeah, the bylaw wasn't written that clearly. It just talks about districts, doesn't talk about abutting. And unfortunately, that was a mistake we made because it was one lot. So we were looking at it.
We had no way of knowing.
We had no way of knowing. I mean, so it, like I said, I wrote it, whatever it may be, but it's, here we are today.
Can I ask what would be helpful for us to bring to the next meeting? We talked a little bit about looking at a new location for the building. We had put together some documentation for different assessments, you know, community impact, environmental impact. Are those sufficient? Do we need to provide more? I'm just looking to come prepared so we can, you know, we can know what we can go with.
Did you get those, Jeff? The community impact and, did you look at those at all?
I looked at those, and I had no engineering issue with them.
Yeah.
I mean, but that's pretty objective for, I expect the board, if they had certain concerns, they would, they would be asking, asking questions of the applicants.
And that's kind of what I came away, I didn't see anything from that impact assessment that would raise a concern for me that unless something went in, and then, like I said, the fire department and border health are going to kind of take control of that. That's not really a planning board issue. So unless one of those uses came in at some time, I don't see this small manufacturing assembly to have that type of environmental impact. Jeff's approved the stormwater, so I don't see really there being environmental impact there, so. So at this point, I'm not concerned with the environmental impact. You know, it, anything along 140, I look at that, having lived here all my life, I look at that as, as a road, as, you know, as I look at other streets in the area, not a huge traffic concern. I do know Bait Street is a concern. I think the town itself could do something to amend those concerns, number one, by making a 90-degree turn, but it, you know, I, I do understand what you're looking at as the number of cars per day and how many are going to be leaving at the same time, and does it, is it going to create a bundle of traffic? No, we have other utilizations on that road. But push come to shove, if, you know, I'll look at the, like I said, CMR PC, did the traffic count there a few years back? I'll take a look at them and see where my concerns are. But I, other than that one spot, that, at the end of Bait Street, which, you know, for whatever reason, I think lacks proper controls more than holding everybody around it responsible. You know, I don't think that 140 is, you know, it's not bumping a bump of traffic on 140. It just isn't. So it, my board may disagree with me. I mean, if they want a traffic study, you know, um-
Mr. Chairman, on that point, I just, I know this is a new public hearing, so I'll say it again if I said it already at the other, at the, at the other hearing. But Route 140 and the traffic generation that will occur because of this site development if it goes forward, 140 can support it, in my opinion. My concern with our original review was the entrance down near a Bait Street that has since been eliminated. And I would have, had that still been on the table, I would have suggested to this board that it look at whatever traffic review is necessary, not for the issue of counts and turning movements and delays, but for the safety of the Bates intersection. And again, because of the elimination of that driveway nearest Bait Street, I don't feel it's necessary to look at the safety there.
Yeah.
As it relates to this development coming into the neighborhood, if it does.
Yeah, if I had, you know, and that's why I was quick to move in that direction, having grown up in Mendon. I knew that that putting an exit onto Bait Street was not a good idea. So that's why I moved quick to eliminate that, and which you guys-
Yeah, we, again, it was no, would you rather have had it? Yes, but no big deal.
I'm of the same, I don't believe a state road that has that site visibility and width constitutes a traffic assessment for 30 cars, and they're not all going to be going in and out per day. We have subdivisions that, that produce more than 30 cars a day. And so that's, that's how I kind of look at it when I, when I determine traffic, traffic assessment. It, you know, like I said, we have subdivisions that produce more than that per day. So it wouldn't, certainly Route 140 should be able to handle that type of traffic.
I don't see which direction we're going to take right now, based on where we're at. I don't think, moving the building is not going to, just based on Mr. Hodge's drawing and assuming it's accurate, and I'm sure it is, I don't assume moving it right or left is going to help anybody.
Well, my-
Making it smaller makes it unaffordable, and it is designed for that building size. The town doesn't allow multiple buildings on one lot like that without special, I think you have to go through-
you have to go through special zoning variants.
Yeah, I have to go to ZVA.
So that would be, because we looked at that earlier on, and maybe making smaller, you know, two smaller buildings and stuff, but that was too time-consuming and too, it wasn't, it didn't make any sense money-wise.
Right. I understand.
Because the property, it does, in order to achieve all the things that you need to have a safe property with all the drainage and all the things...
All I can ask is take a look at it, you know, it's...
I appreciate your position. I'm just saying, I don't, we're going to, we're burning time one way or the other for us. If we're going to go to litigation, we go to litigation. I mean, that's, that's, we're not, no, don't get me wrong, been there, done it, spent 11 years of my life in a case with Shell Oil Company, don't want to do it again. As lead plaintiff, don't want to do it again. We won, but still not.
Well, I, I think it's still, you know, shows an opportunity for you to be able to do, take a look at it and do something, come back to the board, even if it's a quick change, talk with Jeff. I'd like to see an attempt to make, we're going to continue the meeting for two weeks, and then come back to the board and see if you can throw something together that's more feasible.
And thank you. We, meet with Mr. Hodges, find out...
I would love to. I've, I've, I sent him an email, but, and I'd be glad to do that, Eric and Mr. Hodges.
I'm just trying.
Yeah.
Make everybody happy when they come back.
I would do that with any, with any, any abutters that want to meet with me. Public record, my phone number's out here. I'll be glad to meet you or try to resolve issues. I understand, if I was sitting in your shoes, I'd be feeling the same way, and you articulated what you, you needed to say pretty well, and I, I wish I could make it, make myself go away on this project, but I, I'm here.
I got to trip.
So that's all I can do is offer. But two weeks and decision one way or the other?
Yeah, I would, I would venture to say at the next meeting.
The board comfortable with that?
We want to see, we want, yeah, we want to see what can be, whether we can come together on this, or the board's going to make a decision.
Anybody have suggestions that work within our perimeter, we'll take them.
Well, once again, I, I talked to the abutters, you know, make sure you're communicating with Jeff. Jeff might have some ideas, I mean, he's a pretty smart guy.
I'm out of ideas.
Never heard me that.
And if you talk to my wife, she might tell you something different.
And to be honest with you, I'm going to do more research on which direction the planning board should handle this. When we're at my meeting in, in the future, I'll, I'll address my board as to what I found, and then, because I don't feel comfortable voting either way tonight.
Yep.
Until I do further research.
For sure.
I tend to look at cases that were out there. I'm one of, I'm one of those planning chairs that spend a lot of time in research, and if there's a case out there similar to this, I will find it and I will see what the position was.
Yeah, you don't want to put the town in a bad position.
Yeah, I don't want to put the town in a bad position, I don't want to put the, the community in a bad, you know, the butters in a bad position. However it goes, I'll make sure I do my homework on it, and I will advise the board what I found, and then the board, I don't, you know, these guys all have their own vote, so we'll shoot from there.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Can you get a minute? I can't be here in two weeks, and I just want to share one or two more thoughts with you tonight.
Sure.
Because I figured these issues may be discussed in two weeks. With respect to the stormwater management and so forth, they're proposing two infiltration basins. The hydrology on those shows that there's a net reduction, not only in the peak rates of runoff to the west, but in the volumes of runoff. And, and that's important, and I wanted to bring to the board's attention, because that's in line with the intention of types of development such as low-impact development, whereby, the idea of low-impact development is really to try to spot stormwater management around an area. In a mass DEP stormwater handbook, they say on a lot-per-lot basis, a lot-by-lot basis. My point there is that, that statement has to do with talking about subdivisions where there's the large centralized stormwater management. Well, here, it's a single lot, so it's, it's really hard to pigeonhole LID, low-impact development, in the context of low-impact development for something like this, but I wanted to point out to the board that, again, with the infiltration basin in this, there's two of them, there's two basins in the back, so to somewhat decentralize, but more importantly, there's recharge going on that actually results in a net reduction of volume. I mean, less runoff after development than before, even though there's an increase in impervious area. And the other thing I wanted to point out to the board is with respect to discussion early this evening about environmental impact and reviewing that, what goes on in the building, whether it's assembly or some manufacturing, whatever, I mean, I look from a civil engineer's perspective in a site plan review, and what this board is charged with, looking at development of the land and so on and so forth, I look at what goes on in the building as something that's building-related, not site development-related.
Right.
If the building or any of these uses were to have something going on outside the building that would raise my concern about pollution of stormwater, for lack of a better term, such as storing partially manufactured metal facilities, metal things outside that come in contact with rainfall or something else, I'd be, I'd be saying, board, be careful, let's look at environmental. But, but again, that was manufacturing facilities and so, the uses and so forth going on within the building as a whole, so they got to meet whatever...
Right.
Use and requirement and building...
That's kind of why I deferred to the fire department and the Board of Health.
Yep.
It's more under their guise than ours.
Sure.
We're for site development.
Yep. And, yeah, and lastly, with respect to water going down the drain, Title V, that's administered by the Board of Health, but nevertheless, it's going to be sanitary wastewater. It can't be manufacturing wastewater, can't be car wash water, it can't be anything like that. It's going to be sanitary wastewater. There are provisions to deal with industrial wastewater in a different way. Thank you.
That's good information. Thank you, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until May 24.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have any further questions.
There's two more people I didn't get to wait to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but I, I'd like to get, I'd like to allow the opportunity for, I'm not going to take any repeat questions or repeat people, but anyone new that wants to speak. Do we have someone?
Pat Ruth is speaking, been waiting a while.
All right, Ruth.
You need to unmute. I think Kathy's there too, but I don't have her kids anymore.
Well, now I'll take the motion to continue the public hearing.
Second. I make a motion. I made the motion.
Dave and I.
I, Barry, I.
Bill Ambrosino, I. So we will meet again on this subject on May 24. Thank you, gentlemen.
Seven.
Seven, I didn't hear that.
Seven o'clock?
Uh, seven, yeah, yeah, we'll put you on first.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, Brian.
Nice meeting you.
I'll talk to you more.
Thank you.
Chairman, will you need me anymore?
I've got that issue on the, when, AORD that failed that the, I wanted to talk to you about that. So...
Cape Road now.
Yes, 7 Cape Road.
Mr. Chairman, are you all set with me?
I am. Get out of here.
Okay, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jeff.
I feel like a guilty little kid tonight, please, go. Yeah, he's like, exit, Steve's left.
Have a safe drive.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you.
All right. Where we at? That's yours. And these guys got, you guys got a sign, that's also. Hey, come up here, young lady. You're going to sell flowers. All right, we're going to open the special permit for...
7 Cape Road.
For 7 Cape Road. The contents with MDL, Chapter 48, Section 11. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by teleconference or in-person on Monday, May 17th, May 10th, excuse me. Holy cow, I didn't put my glasses back on. May 10th, at 7:00 PM in the Mendon Town Hall. Oh, site plan review special permit, excuse me. Selling live flowers and plants. Uh, said property in a zone by Filma Amica?
Amelia.
Amelia, excuse me.
Gamboni.
Gamboni. Not Italian by any chance, huh?
Italian grandfather.
All right, that gives you a special vote anyway. Philip Isan, of the same address, and it was advertised on 4/23 and 4/30 in the Milford Daily News. All the paperwork seems in order, I looked at it earlier, the butters list, money.
Everything was paid.
Everything. And we've got a little drawing. Looks like you only gave us one, so I'll have to share.
I guess so.
All right, guys, 7 Cape Road.
Yeah, I drove by, looked at it.
What were your thoughts, John? Well, first of all, let's let this young lady speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, yeah, the business is going to be a seasonal business. We're setting up a small shop, we have a little greenhouse, and is going to sell, you know, garden plants, herbs, and we'll have fresh-cut bouquets. So the thinking is seasonal and kind of small and kind of more like a boutique kind of style shop, in comparison to the big, you know, garden centers.
I guess my, my only question, and it was my concern for the site plan special permit, you know, this is, falls under agricultural, it does require a special permit, and, but my, my only concern with the site plan was off-street parking. Is there available off-street parking?
So we, we, customers do not have to park on the upside. We have about 15 parking spaces.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Okay.
And we can do more in the back, we can clear some, you know, some more if we need to, but we have 15.
If you have over 15 people coming to buy flowers, I mean, you're a heck of a salesperson.
It's Mother's Day, she will.
Yeah, Mother's Day will be the only...
Mother's Day will be the one, yeah.
But yeah, if you could just, you know, monitor that.
You just going to sell cut flowers or part of plants?
So yeah, baskets, you know, hanging baskets, some perennials and annuals, depending on the season, the months.
Yeah, of course.
And then, yeah, fresh-cut flower bouquets.
All right.
And we're planning to set rain-catching barrels to also use, and we'll, we'll try to be as, you know, as conscious, you know, with water use and, you know, to appeal also to our customers, because, you know, we know that Mendon residents, you know, they like their conscious use of land.
Do we have any questions from the audience we got on this application?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Can I, I actually have a question, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Come on up, Dan.
So you had a sketch.
Don't tell me you're selling flowers, too.
I just wanted to confirm that this is still being considered a home business occupation, still a residence.
Yeah.
Just, there's some very strict rules about the water usage, so as, let's find, as long as it is, there's no issue.
That's why she's getting those rain barrels.
Well, yeah, we're definitely trying to be very conscious about when we will water and using rainwater.
Yeah.
Trying to be very conscious about, because I think that will be actually a selling point when we talk to our customers, because we know Mendon, Mendon really cares about their environment.
Yeah, the, I'm not sure there'll be a huge impact on the water, I understand the concern.
Yeah, well, so I'm the clerk for the Water Board.
Oh, okay.
I'm the one who sends the bills. It's just, it's more, we can't, like, if this was becoming a complete commercial lot with no house, then we can't allow water because of the rules with Hopedale, but this, this would be allowed.
Yeah, this being in home business.
Except there is a water ban, no outdoor watering by end of 5:00 PM.
And that's basically, and not so bad.
Anyway, okay, I just wanted to double check.
You did a nice drawing, that's, that's actually pretty good, I like that.
Oh, did I?
Yeah. I drove by, looked at, looks good, looks nice.
I've been by it too, Bill, everything looks good on our end.
Yeah, okay.
No questions, I'll make a motion.
I don't think we have any questions, any further question from the community? All right, go ahead, Damon.
I'll make a motion to...
Special permit and site plan review for 7 Cape Road.
7 Cape Road, yes, sorry, I just, I was looking, I was looking for the, for the email so I could get the right address.
Yep.
Okay, so Damon made the motion.
Second.
Barry seconds, all those in favor?
John, I.
Barry, I.
Damon, I.
Unanimous.
Good luck.
Good luck.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
I'll send you something.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
Before, we got one more point of order here. What was this for, this Jeff?
The bond estimate for Misco.
Yeah, we reduce it, increasing it, or what? Or is it just...
You sent it out.
I sent it to everybody.
Yeah, I read it.
Yep. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I am.
What's the amount?
It's the last part of the...
Are you expecting me to remember that?
Huh?
So they, but they haven't provided us one yet.
You expect me to remember that?
No, he's got it there.
Oh, you got it?
He's got it in his seat. What's the amount, so we can make the motion?
All right, the amount is 6,000, 601,000.
Make a motion to accept the bond for 601,000 for, uh...
Yeah.
Locust Hill Drive, Section 7.
Locust Drive.
Second. Locust Hill Drive.
Section 7.
You got it.
Second.
All those in favor?
John, I.
Barry, I.
Damon, I.
All are satisfied.
What's this signed decision for 47 Milford Street?
We just did it.
No, he hasn't signed it yet. That's, that's the one we approved up there. That's the decision, we got to, we got to sign.
What did we just sign just now?
All right.
That's the decision for 47.
You signed it, he hasn't.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, we did, he gave it to me.
Okay.
We're all set.
We need to sign it.
Yeah, we need a couple more signatures on that.
Do we need Damon to sign?
Yeah.
What's the one I just signed, Gail?
Well, it wasn't this one.
Okay, I'll stop and sign it tomorrow.
Because I'm taking Wednesday and Thursday off, and I want to give this to them.
Sounds like the...
7:30 to 4:00 tomorrow.
Oh, you're there tomorrow? Okay, I'll see you then.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to...
Okay, what's this other thing that I...
Oh, hold on, hold on, before we, what do you got?
Well, look at your thing.
My agenda?
It says to...
Discussion on that motion.
Ian?
Hi.
Oh, this is, oh, I'm sorry, Ann, you're right. I'm sorry, what do I do with it now?
Well, she wants to, to vote, I guess, on the subdivision breaks of the MOU.
I'm not ready to vote on it, but I talked, we wanted to include something possibly in the subdivision regulations about the MOU with the open space subdivisions, but I talked with Cindy at town council, and she suggested putting something in the subdivision regulations under the approval process, so possibly, you know, when you put together the approvals for a... put together the approvals for a subdivision, having, can you hear me?
Well, it'd be, she wants it as an order of condition?
Um.
No, I, I'll talk to Cindy about it, Ann.
Yeah, she, yeah, she was saying to put them in the approval, so, for example, the, there's like four things that are unusual with the open space subdivisions, you know, the conservation restriction, um, transferring the open space, and having them listed in the approval, so then you don't have like another document to look at.
Yeah, she's asking me to add it to the decision, that's not a, that's not a problem.
So I was gonna work with her and get something, um, to maybe bring to the next meeting that you could look at?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe, uh, maybe we could add it just to the, uh, something we could add to the signature page for the decision on the subdivisions. Like, right now, we have the, the, you know, the statement that shows the day of 21 days to appeal, and right before that, I could put the MOU statement in, you know, and I'll talk to Cindy about it, though, I'll make sure we.
When you do talk to Cindy about it, just make sure that, that, you know, we wanna make sure that the, when, when they are doing this, that it gets accepted at the end, not at the beginning, when we go to accept the road, that's when we take the open space.
Leave it, I would suggest leaving it flexible, because each subdivision is gonna be different, and you're gonna have different circumstances.
We don't want to have the problems we're having, we just were having with Pond Street, so.
Right, but some of the subdivisions, it would be better to get the, um, land transferred over immediately.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know about that.
And it would be in the planning boards, it would be in the planning board's, um, decision, either way, but, so, I would keep it flexible, but.
Right. No, I'll talk, I'll talk to, uh, Cindy about that, we'll leave it, uh, whatever the applicant agrees to. Now, if he's willing to do it upfront, or if he wants to wait till the end, I mean, we're gonna have to have some flexibility with it, um, but.
No, you don't have to have flexibility with it, Bill, you make the, you make the rule and you stick by it, it's like every other town does. Because when you, when you, when you, when you take the land ahead of time, we end up with a problem down the road, you can take the tax money from them while they're building the subdivision, and you can, and you can, it's not a liability problem, and you can, if we ever have an issue at the end of the day, before we accept the roadway, you can use it, to, if we have to adjust anything, you can adjust it without having a fight like we're having at, where the Fonz are right now.
All right, the one, I think.
I agree with you, Damon, on that.
What is the, what is the asset?
He created his own problem up there.
Yeah, that's right, because he, we took the land.
So what's that got to do with it?
Because we took the land first.
Right, so he created his own.
And he built on that land.
Why, why, why is that on that?
It shouldn't be on us, it isn't.
According to him, he needs to leave it open so he can.
But we did it after.
I think, I think one of the issues isn't so much as what the MOU says, it's the transfer land to Medicom.
Well, what is, what is, what is the rush?
The problem with, in certain circumstances is if, and which isn't a, a problem right now, is if the subdivision takes a long time to, um, be approved, it takes many years to, um, be finished, then putting together a conservation restriction might end up costing more money.
Okay, to the, to the, to the, to the owner of the subdivision, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll make them responsible when that, when that happens, uh, Ann, but my, my question and understanding is, if. Comfortable. I'm not comfortable transferring that land to Medicom, if, what, what happens if, uh, you know, something transpires midstream and, and, you know, he hasn't started building any yet, and decides that he wants to do a conventional? We're kinda hung up there at that point, because Medicom, you know, he did all the paperwork and Medicom's taking possession, but now he hasn't built anything yet, and he decides he wants to go conventional.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it that way, I'm just saying you should leave it flexible, that's the way the zoning bylaw is written, so, and it doesn't always necessarily go to Medicom, it would be either a land trust, the town, or, uh, you know.
Yeah.
But, so I guess my question is, then, instead, instead of an MOU, could it be something, could these points be put in the decision, the decision?
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, let me, let me talk to, uh, let me talk to Cindy and get some language on that, and then I can bring it to the next meeting, and we can have further discussion based on what I speak to Cindy about.
Okay.
And what the language is gonna be, and, you know, if it ends up being, I mean, this board's gonna vote, there's five members, if everybody votes that, you know, it's gonna happen at the end, that's the way it's gonna happen, but if she has language that, that, um, you know, whatever the decision the board makes, that can go in my decision, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
I, I have another question on, like, the design guidelines, is that, is that something that should be, like, stated somewhere in the, um, in the, um, subdivision regulations, just that?
Yeah, we could, we could, uh, add them to the subdivision regulations, just saying, uh, please refer to the recommendation of the design guides of Mendon, we could put it at the beginning with the rest of the criteria, meaning Mendon zoning, yeah, we could add that paragraph.
Yeah, that'd be good for, you know, them to see it when they're looking over the, the rules.
It, you know, it, you know, and it's, um, as well as, um, you know, I know we built the LID into the subdivision rules and regulations, but we should call it out better, I think, in zoning, because that's why I think Jeff missed it originally on that lot, he didn't realize, so we might have to do a little bit of job of calling out on the zoning, uh, bylaws, also, LID stuff.
There was two things that, like, I didn't bring up, because there was so many other things on that, but the, that, they're supposed to use native plants, so a row of arborvitae isn't native, they should use like eastern red cedars, and in the parking lot, they should have at least three trees, and that, that's in, um, zoning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that could be brought up at the next meeting, but.
Okay.
Um, and then I have one more question, um. Oh, I know, someone needs to tell Alfonso that it didn't pass at the town meeting, for, for him to buy the property back, and I, I think it should be the planning board?
Well, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, um, it's, um.
He should be acquiring it on his own, it's, it's his, it's his concern, we, we don't, I don't think we need to volunteer anything, I mean, they need to pay attention to what's going on, if they want the place to get accepted.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, let him, let him chase it down, I guess, I mean.
I mean, I can, if, if, if the board agrees, I can, you know, get a message to the engineer, just because I do, I do business with him, and I talk to him frequently, um.
Yeah, if you could just pass it on that it didn't get, uh. Add in the land, is that in land trust, does Mendon, let me understand the land trust situation first, uh, I thought when we transferred land to the Medicom, that they actually owned the land.
No, the, the town owns it, because the Conservation Commission wanted the town to own it, so Medicom would, would hold the conservation restriction.
Okay, I gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice to resolve this, what, what, Damon?
I was just saying that they oversee it, we in the town owns it.
I wonder, yeah, I wonder, uh, I wonder why they got voted down at town meeting, I mean, we're talking about, what, 8,000 square feet?
All sorts of fun stuff got voted down at town meeting.
Well.
Unfortunately, I had to leave early, I wasn't feeling well, um, so I didn't get to, uh, I wish I was there, um, because this is only gonna delay things, uh, it's, whatever, I mean, I have no position one way or the other on it, other than the fact that it needs to be resolved, and I think the easiest way to resolve it was the town to vote to sell them back the 8,000 square feet.
Yeah, though, it's, it's, it's complicated to do that, though, and there's a lot of steps that the town would have had to be involved in, and would have had to spend a lot of money following up on it, so.
Well, it's, it's done deal anyway, so.
All right. Okay.
Other than that, I need a motion to floor to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
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 Bye-bye.
All right, Damon, I.
Everybody.